I want you to know that the candidates, they're seated in this order. We did it as sort of a blind draw so that there was nothing presupposed and sometimes alphabetical. If you go to a few forums and everybody sits alphabetically every time, then you're always hearing people in the same order. We feel like this is more fair. We analyzed that after the last forum and made that change. We're glad that our moderator for today is Erin Reddish. Dr. Reddish is a Wayne State professor of history and he is a resident of Huntington Woods, not Ferndale. Again, our effort to be as fair as we possibly could. And I want to thank Dick Wilcock, who will be our timer up here. You probably won't see all of his action, but he's going to be holding up little signs to let the candidates know when they're running out of time so they can appropriately wrap up their statements. Let's see. Antwin Dick. Yeah. Yeah, he just held up a sign to me. All right. But it applies to everybody but me. Dick was one of our founding members of CFF, so we're glad to have him here continually in this role of timer. Please, please, please turn off your cell phones. Like I said, it's a little nerve-wracking to sit up here, so we don't want people interrupted by cell phones. Please turn them off. And none of the candidates have any electronic devices. That's part of our guidelines as well. Nothing electronic at the table. The format will be that there will be three-minute opening statements by each of the candidates. Then we will have questions that are written on cards. We won't be taking questions like directly from the audience where you're shouting out. This is our attempt to always keep it civil. It's not a debate where people go head-to-head. Every one of the candidates will be answering the questions that we pose to them. We have a collector over there. Paul Collum will be selecting -- collecting the cards. I'll be helping get them sorted into our moderator. So three-minute opening statements, questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question. We will be doing it in a round robin style, so someone goes -- a different person goes first each time, and then there will be closing statements of two minutes by each of the candidates. When -- we've allotted about 90 minutes for this. We might end a little bit early depending on the number of questions. After that, we're going to take a three-minute break. And we've asked Dave Coulter, who is running unopposed for mayor, to join us at the table, and we'll have an opportunity to hear from him and pose questions to him as well. But we'll take a little break between those things. So with that all said, I think we're ready to go. So Dr. Reddish, take it away.
Thank you very much. And before we start, I also want to acknowledge Citizens for Fair Ferndale, which is just an amazing organization in Ferndale. She counted herself lucky to have such a great and civil organization. With that said, I don't want to take up any more time. So we begin with three-minute introductions, and the order is randomly chosen by me right now. And let's start with Raylon.
Good afternoon. I'm Raylon Leaks May. Thank you to CFF for hosting this forum and thank you to community members for joining us today. Three years ago, I was elected to the Ferndale Schools Board of Education. I serve as trustee and treasurer. On the school board, I collaborated with community members, my fellow board colleagues and school administration to develop a strong vision and strategic plan for our district. Ultimately, this vision resulted in the restructuring of our schools, a restructuring that creates strong, equitable educational opportunities for all of our students. I was also instrumental in hiring a progressive administrative team, which is today taking our schools to new heights. A Montessori program, honors courses in the middle school, the opportunity for students to earn an associate's degree while in high school, and more. These improvements are working. For the first time in almost 10 years, our enrollment numbers are increasing. Our hard work, including mine, has elevated our schools to the next level. I have 25 years' experience as an active community volunteer, including my recent leadership in strategic planning, governmental policy, and difficult decision-making. I'm ready to bring this experience to Ferndale City Council. My campaign platform vision is based on three pillars. First, I have a multi-generational vision and reality. And not only do I have five beautiful children living in this community, my mother, a senior, also lives here along with my sister and my nephew. Ferndale attracts young professionals, baby boomers, and retirees. My vision includes advocating for a strong housing plan to make it possible for young people to afford rent or purchase a home. It should ensure affordable, accessible, and safe housing for older residents, too. We want to welcome all, young people, seniors, families, and encourage everyone to grow and age in place right here in our highly desirable and walkable city. Second, I value smart development. Ferndale is growing again, and we continue to emerge from the Great Recession. Ferndale brings both opportunities and challenges, and we must approach development and growth in a way that benefits the whole community, balancing beauty, convenience, and business sense. I will work with community members and city staff to find the right mix. Third is inclusive collaboration. This is valuable experience and insight I want to offer our residents and fellow city council members as your next community leader. Two of the most important entities in a community is its city government and its schools. Continued strong collaboration between the two is key, and with that, I know that we will be even better together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Cam Ren.
Thanks. I want to start out again by thanking CFF. It's a great organization and a great opportunity to host these forums, especially when there seem to be so few this year. I also want to thank everyone for participating and their questions and the debate discussion we'll have to come. Four years ago, we started out on a journey together, and it's been incredibly exciting and providing really a great opportunity to continue service in the community. It's also been unexpected and challenging in many ways. I know more about chicken coops and drain culverts and drones than I ever thought I would get engaged in. But it's also been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life, and it's only increased the amount that I'm enamored and committed to our community. And that's important to me. Originally, I grew up in Bay City, and I moved around a lot for work and school. And to finally settle down 12 years ago here to a place I can truly call in my heart home is really valuable to me, and I cherish the opportunity to serve that community. I went to Michigan State University and have also attended Oakland University for graduate work. I currently work at Blue Cross Blue Shield, and since 12 years ago I moved in, I've been involved in the community in any number of committees and commissions and volunteer opportunities, both in and around the Ferndale area. I feel very privileged to have served the last term, the last two years as mayor pro tem. And I want to run again because I think there's still more work to do, and I have the energy and dedication to do it. Like Raylon, I want to focus on partnerships. We've had a lot of success over the course of the last few years, building stronger relationships with organizations, and I think there's more to do in that space. I think city services, we have fantastic city services in Ferndale, and I want to protect that and continue to enhance that with investment that makes it easier to do business in and with the city. I want to be responsible for financial management that makes sense for the community. We are stewards of a tremendous amount of resources for four square miles, and to make sure we're using that in the most productive way possible. And again, as I'm sure you'll hear many times tonight, the smart development, development that makes sense for a community of our size and character, and that will only secure our success in the future. And I think we can all do this while respecting the dignity and allowing for a respectful community for everyone who lives here, who goes to school here, who works here. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity and to run and serve another term. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, we have Bill.
Oh, I do like to thank the CFF for having this little forum together, and this is my first political adventure. I've lived in Ferndale 27 years. Me and my wife raised our three children here, and they went through the school district. I love the city. It's, you know, it keeps growing, it keeps getting better. I got a lot of passion for the city. I like the diversity. I think being in business, I owned my own company for 35 years. I could bring a lot to the city council, which I think is doing a great job as the ones that are there now. I'm big on the police, fire, and DPW employees. I think if they're strong, the city stays strong. And I just, well, my experience of being in business, I think I could bring a lot to the city in helping with new development. And I've had union employees, I've done negotiations and safety meetings, you know, through my own company. So just my experiences I want to bring to the city and help it stay like it is and keep growing and make everybody happy.
Thank you. We will now, for most of the rest of the period, will have questions answered from candidates, from the audience, and these will ask two-minute answers.
And so this part of it works when you write down the questions and get it up. I only have an overwhelming number of questions up here yet, so please, give us the question. And I'm just going to throw something in. Crystal, I'm going to ask you to do an extra job for us. If you can't hear the candidates, would you please raise your hand?
They could holler a little louder.
Okay, thank you. Just so you know, this microphone is not to amplify in the room, but it is for our taping. So all the candidates are going to need to speak up so everybody can hear. So if they drift off, Crystal, just give a little something. Okay, so let's start there.
Okay. So the first question, and we're going to go Bill, Dan, Raylon, was this. How would you describe your involvement in the community? So we'll start with Bill. How would you involve your -- describe your involvement in the community?
I'm a member of a couple organizations, the Elks, and I do a lot of work with them. We do Christmas baskets and we do wheelchair ramps for people and things like that. I was involved with the schools a lot when my children were in school. They're all graduated now. They went to college and they're gone. That's why I'm running for council. I'm retired, I have the passion, and I want to get more involved with the things that I could help to see and do.
Thank you. Cam?
Currently, I'm president of the Ferndale Community Foundation, which over the past, oh, 10 or so years, has pushed over $85,000 into the community through small grants into area nonprofits. I'm also the immediate past president of the Ferndale Housing Commission, where we've done a considerable amount of work there to strengthen that organization. I've served on the board of directors, I currently serve on the board of directors, of Ferndale Youth Assistance that produces programs for at-risk youth in the school district. I'm the former chairman of the Board of Michigan AIDS Coalition, which is a local nonprofit within the city of Ferndale. I'm also the former vice president of the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission, as well as work that I've done as chairing one of the city's pension boards, and I sit as a member of one of the other city's pension boards as well. I've also done volunteer work through a variety of activities through the city to raise money, including the pub crawl and the Blues Festival, the End of Prohibition that raises money for Goodfellas, as well as the Clean the Ferndale Up and assorted other activities throughout the city. So I've been pretty engaged since I moved here. It's an easy area to get involved in and engaged in, and it's one of the beauties of the city, is once you kind of step foot in, it brings you into all the other great stuff that's going on, so.
Thank you very much. Raylon?
Yes, well, as I stated earlier, I'm completing my third year in the Ferndale Schools Board of Education. I've been involved with Citizens for Fair Ferndale with their Good Neighbor Civility pledge. In fact, all of the school board members have taken that pledge, and I believe all of the city council members have taken that pledge also, of how to be a good neighbor. So I'm really proud of that. I've also been involved in the Ferndale Education Foundation. Ferndale Education Foundation gives grants, allows teachers to apply for grants to enhance the instruction in their classroom with creativity and fun for the kids, and usually those grants go on for years, I mean, they turn over from class to class, so I'm really proud of that. I have to say, my political, I guess my political experience has begun, began with when my children were at Grant Early Childhood Center. I took on leads to take on, become the Grant PTL treasurer, the Head Start Family and Policy Committee Chair, and I have to say, that's probably where I learned that I could make a difference and that I was bitten by the bug to help others and perform civil service. Let's see, I have to say that anytime the DDA wants, has some event going on, I'm one of their volunteers. I love being involved in my community. It's something that I will always do. And fortunately, I also have my little daughter Ava, who I call my leader in training, who follows me around everywhere I go, and she is seeing my involvement, and she wants to be involved, too, so I'm passing it on. Thank you.
Second question is, would you vote for privatizing the DPW? Would you vote for privatizing the DPW? And we'll start with Cam.
No. Okay. All right. I mean, I can expound on that, but it all revolves around no. I don't believe that's the best solution for DPW, and it's not something I would support.
I would say I love my services that I receive from DPW. I love that, I think it's run efficiently and effectively, and one of the reasons why I would not support privatization of DPW is because, is just that. We're doing a good job right now, why change it? I was instrumental, I won't say instrumental, I helped with the headly that just passed. I was the one who got out the absentee ballots, and the reason why I did that and why I took that job so seriously is so that we could keep our services. I'm pleased with what we have, and I don't want it to change. I only want it to get better. Thank you.
No.
No, as I said earlier, the police, the fire, and the DPW is one of my main things. I think the stronger they are, the stronger the city is. Their union employees, they do a great job, like everybody, I think, agrees here, there would be no reason to take it out. If anything, I would like to work with them and get more people or help them in any way we could. I think we definitely need to keep it in-house.
Thank you. The third question is a little long, but it's about trust. How would you approach people who just don't trust government, don't really believe or approve of what council tells them, and are ready to say what they believe? Basically, how would you approach people who just don't trust government? And Raylon, I'm going to start with you.
Well, I have to say that I'm coming from a little bit of experience with that on the school board. We had to work really hard to bring about a level of trust with our employees, our staff, because prior to being on the school board, there was a lot of chaos on the school board. So I hope that with the steps that we're taking, we're noticing, we're recognizing our employees, we're trying to think of ways outside of the box to decrease our costs but increase our school, increase the programming in our school classrooms. I would say that it would just, trust is difficult to gain back once it's lost, but I encourage anyone who has any lack of trust to definitely stay involved, ask those questions. I believe in transparency, I believe in accountability, and I am open. I welcome your questions. I welcome, you can yell at me, you can do whatever you want to do, and I will answer you as open and honestly as I can. It's one of the reasons why I became involved in politics and working for the community, because I believe that you have a voice, it should be expressed, and any lack of trust needs to be expressed. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, like, trust is hard. I guess I would approach them as why they, is it the local people that they don't trust? Is it something that happened to them? Is it somebody on the council or somebody that works at the police? Why they wouldn't trust? And encourage them to get more involved in what's going on so that we could get their trust back. I think if they get involved, I think we can get their trust back if they don't have it now.
Cam?
Yeah, this is a great topic, because public service, especially in the last 20 or 30 years, has been much maligned nationally, locally, state level, and probably, you know, with some cause, through the actions of public servants that have betrayed our trust, and that tends to permeate the whole institution. And that's really unfortunate, because by and far, the large majority of folks engaged in this are really good people. Everybody up here are good people trying to get engaged in their community. But part of the job is interfacing and listening to and talking with people that don't agree with you, that will not trust you, what you say, even when actions do follow through. It doesn't lessen the responsibility to still represent them. I'm going to make a decision after listening and being inclusive and bringing people to the table who trust and agree, and those who don't and those who disagree. And not everybody's going to be happy with that decision, but I believe that if you lead with your heart and your mind and some, and good justification of as many facts as you can bring to the table, over time, you can build that back up. This job is really about relationships. It's about working with folks across all spectrums of political belief. And honestly, that's one of the things that I find challenging and fulfilling, when you can strike up those relationships with those folks on a personal level, that you may not agree with you, but you can still move forward together because there are common causes there.
Thank you. The next question is, what new businesses would you like to see in the city? What new businesses would you like to see in the city? And Bill will start with you.
I would like to see more retail. I think we have enough restaurants and bars. A lot of the, like, the projects that are coming in with the retail stores down below, make it more of a shopping, so you can walk downtown and there'd be more stores going in and out. And then any type of business coming in over where the FOP is, over in that industrial area, would, you know, I mean, employees, you know, bring in jobs. I think we have enough bars and restaurants. I think they, you know, if we get them more retail, that would be better off.
Thank you. Raylon?
Yes. I would definitely like to also see more retail. I would like to, oh my goodness, as a mother of five children, we have crafts, we have projects throughout the schools all of the time. I would love to see a craft store that I can come and pick up things that these kids need right here in Ferndale, and give my business right here locally to this community. Toy stores, too. Christmas time, my goodness. I'd like to see more apparel stores, and I would like to see more family dining. We have a variety of restaurants, a variety of cuisine, but I'd like to see certainly more dining, family-style dining restaurants in this community. I would definitely be in support of that. Thank you.
Cam?
I agree with a lot of what's said here. I'm not really keen on expanding any kind of restaurants that have liquor licenses for a number of reasons. One, I think we have a fair amount. Two, I'm not willing to concede that we're an entertainment-only district. And three, until the parking is addressed, I think that's a real issue for weekend evenings in the downtown city. I'd like to see retail as well. I would like to see not retail that's a national chain. I would like to see those, Ferndale, a community that's an incubator for small entrepreneurs that can grow. If you look at what's happened with Treat Dreams, for example, and the expansion he's been able to pursue with a great product and a great concept, and there's any number of examples of that through the community. I think we have done a really good job the last four years, shrinking and keeping a very low vacancy rate in the industrial sector. I'm not sure how much room is there left. I think the mayor's business council and the work that we've done in economic development has done a nice job filling out the industrial sector and addressing that, but it's always something to monitor and keep your eye on. But it goes back to when we talk about smart development. What's the character of the city? What are we looking for? Council does not have absolute authority over what opens up. Sometimes things open up that we'd probably rather not be there because it's a national chain or may not be consistent with the character, but as much as we can set those guide rails to guide that development and that policy, that's our responsibility to do.
This actually goes well off that last question. What is your vision, a kind of overall vision for the city? And Cam, I'll let you continue.
Sure. My overall vision for the city is to, development's going to happen. Ferndale is a desirable community, and there is growth that will come here. The question is what kind of growth and at what level, and again, maintaining that character for the city. I see the city in the future being an economically diverse area with a mix of entertainment restaurants as well as that strong retail presence. There is a place for strong industrial that we need to continue to maintain and develop, and that really has accommodations both in housing and job opportunities for every level of the spectrum. So we are an inclusive community. Everyone is welcome here, and that we're open to, we're open for business, we're open to live, we're open to people to have their recreation here as well. But we've got amenities in our parks that really help support the residents as well. And then a community that we can continue to have really honest, open, and good conversation about what that vision is. So it's not just about my vision, but it's how we integrate our vision collectively and build a plan that moves us forward and in that direction.
Bill?
Yeah, you know, like you were saying, I agree with a lot of that. The city is growing now, since, like I said, I've been here 27 years, and it's so much different now than it was back then. I think the housing here is fantastic. It's probably has grown more than any housing in the area. They're talking about putting more apartments, senior citizens living and things like that. The industrial area, I think, is great over there, Northern I-Valley Hilton. There's a lot of room for, like I said earlier, jobs, bigger companies coming in. The downtown is hopping. I mean, if you walk around on the weekends here, it's fantastic, except I guess the parking is the voodoo word.
I said it.
And I know that the council has been working very hard on it, and I'm hoping that if I get there, I could help them with that. And I think if we get the parking solved, a lot of things will grow a lot faster. I think more people will come in if the parking's here. They're coming here, still without the parking, but I think with the parking, it will help. And like Dan said, I think it's the words out that everybody is welcome in this city. It's just so diversified, I just love it. Everybody gets along. It's just a great city to live in.
I think, well, as I stated earlier, I have a multi-generational vision.
I want to see families move in here. I've had the pleasure of helping my mom, who's in the front row here, relocate here to Ferndale, and my sister and my nephew also. And I've been hearing more stories that people are moving their parents in or want to move their parents in, or people that have children who have graduated from high school and have gone to college would like to move back to the city. I would like to see that be a more affordable option for them. I love that our property values are increasing. I love that Ferndale is a desirable community and people want to be here. But I would also love for people to be able to be here. I noticed that in the, for the, between 2000 and 2010, the census, Ferndale's population decreased in numbers as far as families. I think that the city needs to work hard to attract those families here. It will benefit our community, it will benefit our schools. And as you know, strong communities mean strong schools right along with them, because people move to a community for that reason. I'm proud to be raising my children here. I'm proud that they're going to grow up here, and I would love to see them be able to, if they wanted to purchase a real estate here, I'd like to see them be able to do that. People spoke of diversity in this community. That's one of the things that I love about being here, is that my children are growing up to be accepting of others and respectful of others, because that's what I promote in my household. So yes, a multi-generational vision. I would also like to see more inclusive collaboration. I think inclusive collaboration is key. We all have a vested interest here, we're all stakeholders, and we should have a say at the table. I believe in that, and I will push for that as it's being pushed on the school board. So thank you.
The next question is, please explain how the city's master plan is used. And Raylon, it's on the field.
The city's master plan, just, well, I can give a comparison. We just developed a strategic plan in Ferndale that restructured our schools, and the city's master plan pretty much does similar to the same thing. There are plans to, we're looking at our transit, we're looking at how we can become more environmentally, how we can sustain our environment. We are looking at ways to attract more businesses and to promote this community, this already desirable community. So the master plan is just that. It's a plan that the city will look to guide the progression of this community forward. Thank you.
Raylon?
I think Raylon said it well. The master plan is there, but it's also a communication device, not only to communicate what our vision for the development in the space that the city is for, but also for people looking to invest in the city, so they know that where they're planning to spend the next 20, 30 years is congruent with what the plans of the city intends to go in. So there's, it can be part of that comprehensive business model for them. But the master plan is even beyond a developmental, if you use it correctly, tool. One of the things I strongly advocate is that when we revisit the master plan in the near future, we pay a particular eye to an environmental green strategy to it, as well as how we develop those green solutions to support a more sustainable environment long term, and communicate to our neighbors what we're planning, so they in tune can get aligned as well. Environmentalism isn't just a city of Ferndale thing, it's a regional, larger space problem. And the master plan's one way that we can use to help craft that solution and lead the way in the future. So in particular, besides the normal business development stuff... So in particular, besides the normal business development stuff and the master plan in the future, I want to keep an eye towards a more strategic, comprehensive environmental policy that's sustainable and will keep the city even more sustainable.
Dan?
Yeah, the master plan, I like the way the city does their, takes care of the residents within the parks. I mean, we have a dog park, we got the cat shelter, we got, you know, they're not just about the businesses downtown, downtown area. They take care of the residents. They reach out and have things for them to do and keep the whole community, you know, nice. The bike rails, I think that are fantastic. Maybe the green stripes didn't get explained like they were supposed to, but I just think they take care of the residents, and I'd like to see that in the master plan to keep that up.
Can you name one thing that you would like to change in the city? Bill, one thing that you'd like to change in the city?
Parking.
I guess, maybe beyond the green stripes. Beyond the green.
No, I like that. The main thing to me would be parking. If we could solve a parking problem, that would be fantastic. I think the city is doing fine. I think they're on the right track. Like I said, the housing is up probably more than anybody, and then, I mean, if you look at any list, you know, everything, everything in the city is going fine. The only big problem that I see is the downtown parking, you know, to get people to come here and not, that's all I hear, is people complaining about the parking.
Dan?
Well, Bill took my answer, so I'll talk about something else, but I want to be on the record for parking being top of my list. I would like to see a more concentrated effort, both on the part of the city, but really the residents in addressing the rat problem, especially downtown. We've got issues, and I hear this all the time from residents, we're an inner-ring suburb, you're never going to completely get rid of rats, but to address them from a standpoint of the city doing things and educating people about, you know, and making sure with, working with the DDA, that we've got the right dumpsters and garbage collections and secured in place that doesn't encourage the growth of rats. You also have to be responsible neighbors. You've got to pick up, you know, the things that your dogs leave behind when you're walking them. You've got to make sure that your property is kept up. We have to make sure we focus on enforcement of abandoned houses, which we've spent an incredible amount of effort on, but it has to be this community approach. The city can do everything perfectly and will still have rats. It takes people to work collectively to fix that. So that would be the second on my list after parking.
Raylan?
Would you repeat the question for me, please?
Can you name one thing that you would like to change in the city?
Only one? Well, okay. I would like to see, really, a more diverse police force, and I would like to see more diversity in our community. I think it's important to attract that. I think it's valuable, and I just want to see more ways in which we can, one, maintain the diversity that we have and find ways to increase it. I would like to see more diversity, really, across the board in our city government. I think it's important that for a city to reflect, for us to be a city, and we want to consider ourselves diverse and we have so much pride in it, I think that we should have a diverse population, professional diverse population as well. I would like to see that. I know the city is working on ways to make that happen. I know that we are, the schools, we are working with Baker College and the Ferndale Police Department to make it so that students who are showing interest in criminal justice or law enforcement have that opportunity to seek that outlet, that avenue, and for them to be able to work with the police department, perhaps even have mentors with the police department, so they can, so that law enforcement can, we can have that diversity here. It's a slow process, but it's a start because we didn't have even that before. So I'm proud of the police department for working with the schools. I'm proud of Baker College for working with us to make that possible. It's a vision, and I hope to see it come to fruition. Thank you.
The next question is, do you support mass transit or bus rapid transit? How do you see transit benefiting Ferndale businesses and residents? And, I believe, right, Dan?
Yes, I support mass transit. I support a regional approach to mass transit and a solution that works consistently across, especially the M1 corridor. I think Ferndale will benefit from mass transit in increasing the accessibility of the city to others, as well as letting people have more flexibility as to where they want to live in relation to where they work, in relation to where they play or go to school. From a transportation perspective, making that accessibility easier and more accessible is only going to help communities like Ferndale and bring people in and support a more diverse economy as our accessibility grows.
Raylan?
Oh, I definitely support mass transit. I think we have a small community. I believe it's, what's it, four square miles, maybe? And I love that if people who don't have transportation can utilize our services to get to where they need to be. We have a lot, I see a lot of people daily at the bus stops and trying to get, you know, to their day-to-day, and I believe it's important for people to be able to do that. I'm glad that we're a community that has that. There's been, I believe in the past, you know, buses have gone on strike, and we've had people kind of held up with regarding not being able to get to where they need to go. I love that, I don't see that much of that here. I love that we are working with our community, and we're showing them that, you know, we value you, we're going to keep our services, and that we know how hard it is that, for you to get to your day-to-day and to be able to, you know, transport throughout the city, and that we have, we, our community, we have that available for you. I hope that there's no intention for that to ever leave because I think it's valuable. I believe that's it. I support mass transit, always will.
Dan?
I definitely support mass transit. I don't know how much traveling people do, but if you go to any other major city, mass transit is what makes it work. We're in Detroit. The reason we don't have it, I'm sure everybody knows, is because of the Big Three. They wanted two cars in every driveway. So I would love to be able to go out here and jump on a tram and go down to a football game or a basketball game, or go up to Pontiac, or go east and west down over to Southfield, over to Warren. I think it would be fantastic for every city. I think people would get around a lot better, out to the malls, whatever it is. I feel mass transit is coming, probably going to 20 years, 10, 20 years down the road, but they're already coming up Woodward with the rail. It would be fantastic if they just kept going all the way. I think we will get it, and yes, I definitely support mass transit.
Thank you. The next question is this. Schools are important to a city. How can the city and the schools work even more successfully to make sure that they're both successful? And we start with Raylan.
Repeat that question again.
Sure. How can the city and the schools work even more successfully to make sure that they're both successful?
Well, definitely making it so that families can move into this community. More families in the community mean more students in the school, mean more sustainability for the district. I think it's, there was more of it, please, repeat that.
Yeah. And schools are important to a city. How can the city and the schools work even more successfully to make sure that they're both successful?
Well, definitely retention of our residents and recruiting new residents, families. We have already started working with the city. I mean, we now have this wonderful establishment, the Ferndale Area District Library. So there's mass opportunity for the schools and the city to work together. We will be having more opportunity. I mean, we have housing projects coming up, potential selling of buildings, and I think it's important that we look to see how those developments can best represent the city, how best it can benefit the city and how best it can benefit our residents and the people that want to remain, that want to come here. Schools have to be strong because I know that that's one of the reasons when people want to move to a community, the first thing they look at are the schools. It's important. We need, we need, we need your support. I don't know if you know, but there's a proposal on the ballot called the Non-Homestead Village Renewal. I'm going to tell you that we need that for our schools. 14% of our budget, 40, 4 million in school, 4 million annually that would help benefit our program. If we don't have it, I know that we would have to rethink ways in which we have to sustain that, sustain our district. And I'm asking, I'm giving a plea right here, right now, that you vote yes for Ferndale schools. We need you. Thank you.
Bill?
I think the city and the council and the school district, I guess they used to meet and have meetings. I would love to set that back up when I was on the council, to have the council and the school board meet maybe quarterly, so each know what's going on. The city knows what the school's trying to do, the schools know what the city's trying to do. I think that's important. I don't know why they stopped that. Did they have that when you were? I just, I heard that they used to do that. I'd like to see that happen. So the city could work with the school and the school could work with the city.
Dan?
I know, I agree. I think communication and collaboration is the key. I think that there are, I'll use examples of where it's worked well in the past, I think. The Baker College program that we put into place, the city had definitive needs to increase diversity in the workforce. Baker College and the school system were able to put a program together that was attractive to students and successful for the school district as well. And I think that's only going to really bear great fruit in the future as we're able to develop students in a criminal justice programs that will serve the greater community, and that's a good partnership. The city and the police department partnered as well through the community policing when the digital learning center was open, and that was a, we presented some challenges, but we worked together. I think the challenges in the future we're together on, as people mentioned, are development. There's a good deal of real estate that's going to change in its nature, and I think as much as we can partner together to make sure there's a unified vision of what that looks like, meeting everybody's needs, is going to be really important. And then just getting together and maintaining relationships and positive relationships between the two groups and organizations, between the superintendent and the city manager, between the school board and the city council, so that we can continue to get creative with solutions to address mutual problems. We are all tied at the hip in this, and we have pretty much the same constituency when you look at it regionally. And so the days of not communicating or working together have to be over. Resources are just too restricted to do it any other way.
Okay. Next question is, I guess, is code enforcement. How can we get some consistency? There are some properties that seem to be hounded for minor things, while other properties have been junkyards for many years. So consistency in code enforcement, and start with Bill.
Yeah, it's kind of funny you say that because I know some people that got tickets to, for wood behind their garage, and they didn't even have a garage. I'm not sure exactly who, I know they have, somebody that runs around and watches things. I don't know how their job description is written up. Maybe we could look into that more. The community, again, to get involved. When your neighbor's yard is, you know, shabby, I guess you need to, maybe we should have a form that they could fill out and say, hey, you know, somebody needs to come here, and I think we could improve it if we come up with different ways to get the community involved with their neighbors. Maybe they don't want to call a number because they don't want to be the guy that ratted somebody out. Maybe we could do it. You know, I mean, I think there's different ways that we could get the community involved so that the code enforcement would stay equal with everybody.
Raylan?
Well, code enforcement exists so that we can maintain a clean city, a city we can be proud of. There's a reason why they're here. I appreciate that they work well with the residents. If there's an issue that you need a little more time to take care of, I know that they will extend that time for you. So I appreciate that. That's just one of the workings and makings of a city, something we have to deal with. Yes, there can be some consistency. Sometimes I think it might seem like things are unfair, but then I guess that's where your voice comes into play. You need to come up to the city and you need to voice your concerns, and you need to say, hey, I don't think this is right. What can we do? Can we work together? So a strong collaboration is key. I also believe that the city, we can continue to educate our residents as far as code enforcement and what it entails, what we need to do, what can we do to, well, not have to come face-to-face with code enforcement. So I believe that, one, code enforcement has to exist. There's a reason for it. If there's any issues, please feel free to come up to the city and voice your concerns. It's, you have a, you have a right to do that. And then also to educate our residents as to what code enforcement is, what it entails, what can we do to just keep our city and keep our city filled with pride. It's going to remain as it should, and it's one of the makings of a city. So, thank you.
Dan?
I actually tend to think code enforcement is more equitable than it seems, and it's part of the system, the way it's set up. We don't have a wall of shame that we stick a copy of the letter up that says, we noticed, you know, Dan Martin because of this, you know? Mistakes get made, absolutely. No garage is a big mistake, you know? But I do, because you don't know what you don't know, and people tend to assume sometimes, I think, it is more equitable than we tend to think it is. I do think that our Derek Delacorte and the staff with code enforcement work very hard. I think feedback comes into play there. If you don't, no one wants to rat their neighbor out, per se, but I think you should feel free to call your city government without fear of any kind of being outed yourself to be able to ask what's going on. Are you guys aware of this, at least? Are you moving on it? There is a process. Sometimes that process takes a long time, particularly with an absentee owner, to reach to have them address it, but just because it doesn't get resolved right away, it doesn't mean it's not being worked on diligently or working through the process that exists today. So again, I think there's room for improvement, and that comes with feedback and working together as a community. But again, I don't think it's as inequitable as it feels sometimes, and that's just the nature of how the system works and protecting the rights of all residents.
Thank you. Next question is, would you support moving to one public safety director for police and fire instead of separate chiefs? And Dan?
Here we go again? No.
Yeah.
No, I don't believe that model is the most effective. I think, again, we pay for city services and expect city services that are of high quality. We receive that. That model has been applied in a number of different areas. I'm just not a fan of it.
Bill?
Ditto. No. Like, I'm, like I said, I'm very proud of the city services. I think that you definitely need a fire chief, police chief. They have enough to attend with. I don't think it should be combined at all. I think that's one of the things that makes this city what it is, is because of our services. So no, definitely not.
Raylan?
No, I don't support that. And the reason being is because we have, all of our departments need someone to head that department. If we have too many people, if we have one person heading all of that, I think our services will decrease in quality of some sort. And I'm definitely not in support of that. I stated earlier, I love my city services, and I don't want something like this, like one director overseeing the whole operation affecting that. I don't think I'm alone in that. Our city services are great, and we should leave our directors where they are.
The next question is, does the city have a non-discrimination policy? And if so, how is it enforced? Raylan?
I believe that, and forgive me, I'm trying to think of the words, but I believe some sort of policy like that was adopted. I don't know exactly when, but definitely, definitely, because, one, we have a variety of people here in this community. My platform, my platform, one of the pillars of my platform is inclusion. I believe that you should have a say. You deserve to be here. You're welcome here, and it doesn't matter who you are, race, religion, creed, sexual orientation, gender, you're welcome here. And I think Ferndale's doing a great job in providing that message to the community. It's reached outside of the community. I can tell you, I can go anywhere, and people know about Ferndale. They know that we're an inclusive community, and again, I love raising my children here for that reason, one of those, for one of those reasons. Thank you.
Dan?
I'm not sure there's- I'm not sure, there's two levels of that question. I'm going to answer both of them with yes, but I'm not sure if they mean in employment practices or in discrimination of services. So the answer is yes to both, but how it's enforced is different. So you've got an anti-discrimination, anti-discrimination employment practice, and we have a dedicated human resource director that's responsible for monitoring that and looking through that process. In fact, Ferndale is progressive enough that we championed a same-sex domestic partner coverage for employees for health benefits before it was the law of the land. I'm really grateful it's the law of the land today, but we were ahead of the curve in addressing some of those issues as well, in engaging in equal, or in employment equality policy. Also, you know, city services, that's part of the reason why city council's there, and as well as city employees, if, to help make sure and govern and guide that there isn't a discrimination in city services or actions or practices at all. And there are methods through the city to, you can report if you feel that's being done. You've got elected officials representing folks to bring that forward. And yeah, as a policy across the board, however, whatever level you take that question, we've got policies against discrimination.
Bill?
I'm glad Dan went first, because I didn't know. I'm sure we do as a city, it would almost, I think every city would have to have something in place, how they enforce it. I don't know. Again, we just got the HR person, I believe, the last couple of years, so I'm sure that's in her agenda with how she enforces it or what goes on with it. I have not heard of any problem in that area in the city, if there is, and I guess I'll learn about it down the road.
I'm going to stay with you with this question. What would be your plan to keep housing affordable in the city?
Housing is...
What would be your plan to keep housing affordable in the city?
The housing is, works on its own. I mean, the bigger the community gets, the better it gets. The housing is, the market's going to go up. I mean, it's, I think they, right now with the taxes, I believe they just lowered taxes, the council now, last year, was it? I think that, so any time that they could lower the taxes would be great. And I think the millage that's up now is, Raylon was saying, that we need for the schools and stuff, and that's strictly for businesses. So that definitely needs to be extended because the businesses, then our taxes as residents would stay lower, and that would help affordability.
Dan?
Successful cities are going to have housing options that are available at all income levels for folks. So you can, you certainly can't help in appreciation of property value over the course of the city as a whole, but through your planning and through your planning commission, you can work to make sure that the housing stock is available at multiple levels. So it may not be necessarily that all housing's at a certain level, kept at affordable, but you want, you want tiers to that, and you want levels that people can afford and come into at different levels available within the city. And it's really through good planning, a competent, professionally trained planning commission that you can get there and work through that.
My goodness, I wish I would have gone there first because I had a lot of what Dan had to say.
I just read your notes.
Okay. Definitely. I believe that it's key, affordable housing, it's key to work with the planning commission. And we need to have a variety of housing available. I mean, we might have people that want the apartments. We might have people that want the townhouses. We might have people that can afford the higher-scale housing. We might have people that can afford a lower-scale housing. And I think that one of the reasons why I'm running for city council is because I want to be at those, at the table and in those conversations. I want to be able to ask the questions, how does it benefit our seniors? How does it benefit our young adults? How does it benefit our families? And I want, I want to be a voice at those meetings, and I want to be able to express and advocate for those of us who want to remain here and those who want to come. I hear stories all of the time about how we've lost residents because they could no longer afford to live here. Young people, families. And I plan to advocate, be a voice at the table, a strong voice at the table to say, hey, this is what we need. Let's discuss, let's discuss how it benefits all of us. It has to be an inclusive plan, and I believe Ferndale's on its way. I believe we're on our way to, to those, where those discussions are coming, and we're on our way to making those decisions. I would love to, I want to stay here. I want to stay here forever. I want my mom to stay here, and my family to stay here. I want your families to stay here because this is a dynamite community, and I'm very proud of it. Thank you.
This is the last question before we go to final remarks. This is question number 14. So, what would you do to increase resident involvement in the city? And we start with Dan.
I would love to increase resident involvement in the city. We've been working on this for many years. Part of it is reaching out to folks in the avenue and vehicle to which they're comfortable with. You have many generations, multi-generational in Ferndale, and they don't all interact or collectively or engage together in the same ways. So if you've got millennials, for example, which I am definitely not, they may not want to come sitting committee meetings, but there may be ways to engage folks to get involved in other ways. We have found as we've tried to broaden our outreach and get feedback from the community, that town halls don't always work, aren't necessarily attractive to people. So we have to get creative with uses of technology, with how we conduct those sessions, and the different kinds of opportunities to attract people from different generations. I would really like to see, as we continue to explore this, and we've done a lot of work in this, to bring people in of all levels of generation, of generations, to say, what works for you, what works for your community, what works for your peer group, and craft solutions specific to that. So we can increase the citizen involvement, not only in feedback, and not everybody has to serve on a commission or a committee, but just even being engaged and having the tools to provide that feedback, be it social media, in-person, sometimes a town hall, sometimes in written forms of communication. And we've invested in personnel that will help facilitate us do that in the future.
Raylon?
One more, repeat the question.
Sure. What would you do to increase resident involvement in the city?
Well, one of the ways is that I think the city's doing very well is having their boards and commissions. It gives the residents the opportunity to be involved, to have a voice, to guide council in a way that they can, where council can bring it back to the table and make decisions. I think it's important to attract not only our professionals, but people who have just downright experience and knowledge of this community. They have a lot to offer. I believe that we can reach people by way of, yes, town halls. I think it's great to have, you know, face-to-face. I think people like to talk and be able to express themselves face-to-face occasionally. I like our quarterly newsletter. I like our online resources. Word of mouth. It's just, when you're involved in your community, you feel like you're a part of it. It becomes more important to you. And I think that we need to just continue to be able to reach out to community members to say, hey, we want you, we want you to be involved. We value what you have to say, and that you have a voice. I just hope we continue to do that. I hope that when openings continue to come up, I've been to city council meetings where it's been mentioned that, you know, hey, we have an opening here. Not everyone has access to technology, so I would like to see maybe, again, a newsletter, occasional town halls to say, hey, this is what we have going on. Would you like to be involved? And this is the process and the steps in which you need to go to make, that you need to go through to make that happen. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, involvement is the key. And when I go to a council meeting and I see the people that are only there because they're there for a reason, there's just not, like, you know, like you guys are here to see us, and that's great. If the council meeting had all yous there every time, I think it would be fantastic. How do you get people to come to the meeting? I guess that's the magic question. Is it social media? I think so. Today, I had a conversation with a friend of mine about, is the younger generation smarter than us? And his answer was, no, he thinks they're more codependent, which I thought was a great answer, because if you take a phone away from a 25-year-old, I mean, they'll go into, you know, they won't know what to do. They'll be lost. So maybe if we could, you know, communicate with them through the media and their phone and try to get them more involved with what's going on in the city, it might be the way we have to do it now.
Thank you very much. Now we move to the two-minute closing statements, and we'll do the reverse from what we did at the, for the beginning statement. So we'll start with Bill.
Closing statement. I guess I would like to thank the CFF for not making this a debate because it was kind of funny. I think 99% of what we talked about, I think all three of us agreed on. It was kind of a good thing. So it's been a friendly race. I like everybody. I like council. I appreciate this. I've met a lot of people just getting involved in this, and like to thank everybody.
Dan?
Again, thanks to CFF. I want to thank the people who are here, though, too. It was mentioned earlier, and that's right, this can be a really uncomfortable experience, and putting yourself out to run for public office is no joke. And you've made us feel welcome, and I wouldn't expect anything less from Ferndale because we can have an exchange of ideas, where we agree, where we may disagree, but still, it's productive debate and discussion, not debate, but discussion. So thank you for that. I'm in this race because I want to continue the work. I believe I have the skills, the experience, the education, and still the passion to continue to work on city council. I'd like to humbly ask for your support for reelection. And again, feel free to reach out if you've got any questions, comments, concerns. I don't know if I can do this, but my phone number's 248-672-4067. Thanks.
You can't do that.
I can. You can tell.
No.
So one of the things that I truly love about my community is how informed we are regarding our community and the politics surrounding us locally, nationally, and statewide. I'm proud of my progressive community, and I'm proud to be able to offer my progressive leadership. I am fortunate and blessed to have been endorsed by the entire Ferndale City Council, the mayor, the entire school board, members of the library board, the Sierra Club Michigan Chapter and UAW Region One, and a whole host of community members. I'm truly humbled to have so many supporters that believe in my leadership. I hope that after our conversations today, you have come to agree that I will work with multiple stakeholders and community members, such as yourself, to create a common vision for our future. I would like to extend my thanks to Citizens for Fair Ferndale, to the Ferndale Area District Library, to my family for sticking with me through this journey, because it's been trying sometimes, and to all of you for coming out and listening to what we have to say. I ask that you vote for me, Raylon Leaks May, on November 3rd, because I truly believe, I truly believe that we can be even better together. Thank you.